Good evening, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Special Meeting for March 2007. Will you please join me in a pledge allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Loz.
Here.
Vice Commissioner Gelsner.
Uh, Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Commissioner Davis. And Commissioner Gelsner.
Yes.
De broken.
Sorry.
Here.
I put you on the spot, didn't I? I'm here. Okay. Any discussion of the minutes?
I think Madam Chair there said that changes the date of this particular meeting. It changes it from, there's an add to the minutes that says something like this. It says be 6006-300-0004 Sadea Regional Water Campus Use Permit, and it changes the date for the consent from the 21st of March back to March 7th.
Oh, okay.
So, and that's on the add.
Okay. So with that change, any other comments? You have a motion?
A motion to approve the minutes as amended or corrected.
You have a motion?
Second.
A second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. If anyone would like to speak to an item on our agenda or any other statement, please see our secretary. I have no cards, so I guess everyone's here to watch. Okay. Disclosure of Ex parte Communications.
I exchanged a couple of emails with Kevin Kugler for tonight's agenda item.
Okay. I also spoke with Kevin and company regarding this evening, and also I spoke with gentlemen with Newland Communities.
I had contact with Mr. Kugler on Sadea Water Campus. Sorry I'm late.
Mr. Williams, would you like to report any ex parte communication?
Well, I'm not sure that I've had any, so, no, I have none to report.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late.
Nope. All righty. Onto our consent agenda. We have one item. Would anyone from the audience or the commission like to remove or discuss that item? If not, may I have a motion?
I move, Madam Chair, that we approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, on favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, onto old business. We will open the public hearing for case 06300004 Sadea Regional Water Campus Use Permit. The applicant is RBF Consulting. Staff, please.
Madam Chair, Commission Members, this item was last heard on February 7th. And this is the site plan that was proposed at that February meeting. Free water tanks with this proposal and a landscape buffer that was proposed here on these four existing residential lots. At that meeting, the commission did express some concerns with the proposal, specifically the location and appropriateness of this site and the appropriateness of the buffer being on the residential lots. The item was continued to February 21st and then continued again to tonight's meeting. In that intervening time, the applicant did modify their proposal to address some of the commission's concerns. The applicant still maintains that this is the optimal site for their water campus, given their operational requirements and the timing of development. However, to meet some of the commission's concerns, they did remove one tank from the facility, reducing it from 3.4 acres to 2.6, and in the process added a landscape buffer along that western boundary of the facility. And that landscape buffer will contain 24-inch box trees, view fencing for the residential walls to avoid any creation of areas with limited visibility. And that will be a tract that will be owned and maintained by the Sadea Homeowners Association. After reviewing this proposal, staff believes the facility can be developed in a manner that is compatible with adjacent uses and will not be materially detrimental to the neighborhood or public welfare. As such, staff is recommending approval of this request. That concludes my presentation, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Mr. Coons?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I think now would be a good point before the applicant gives their presentation response. To read in the record, as you know, Vice Chair Gelsner could not be here tonight, he's out of town. He forwarded an email to Harvey Kraus and myself this morning, and I'm going to read this. He would appreciate if the following statement was read into the record and passed out to the commissioners during the hearing for the Sadea Water Campus Special Use Permit hearing. And specifically, his statements for the record. "Over the past several weeks, I have read all the materials provided by the Goodyear staff and the applicant for the Sadea Regional Water Campus Special Use Permit. I have also toured the proposed site, visited some alternative sites that have been suggested, asked technical questions of the city's water experts, and studied the supplemental information provided by the applicant. Several weeks ago at the last P&amp;Z meeting, I stated I did not support this application, and all the information that I have received in the last few weeks have not motivated me to change my position. The location of this water campus is a result of poor planning by the applicant and a desire to spend the least amount of money to satisfy the basic needs of the community. Poor planning, time, and money, that is, the driving force behind this application. If the applicant had the needs of the community in the best interest, this facility would be located at least a half mile to the east on the Via West Liberty PAD, already zoned for industrial and commercial use. This location is in the Luke Air Force Base Sound Contour and is very close to both APZ 1 and 2. All these areas do not allow the majority of commercial-type uses to develop, nor do they allow housing, both of which could be a better use of the proposed site. The applicant, a private water company, has given the lack of condemnation powers as one reason for the proposed site being the only one available. The free market allows the private water company to locate a water campus wherever they want, however, they need to pay for the land to develop the campus. If a municipal water company tried to condemn this site using its power of eminent domain, I would also oppose the location, again, the reason being there are higher and better uses of this land. Did the private company try to go out and buy a better suited site? This we have no evidence of. Remember, every seller has a price, it just has to be a reasonable offer for the land. Will the private company be able to recover its costs through a water rate? Of course it can. The Arizona Water Commission will allow the company to recover all reasonable costs for this campus. In the water rates, it allows the company to charge. Easily obtainable land is not always the best land to build on. The private company has cited that the proposed location is technically the ideal spot so that gravity will allow the water to flow, to have a better flow. If this were the case, why is not the proposed campus farther uphill to the northwest and still in the service zone? This they have not answered because it is easy to justify the proposed site since the developer is giving them the campus. If the campus was located further to the east, it would be sighted at approximately 1,090-foot elevation line instead of the current 1,110-foot line. The necessity to pump water up an additional 20 feet would have a minimal cost since parts of the Sadea property are at the 1,130-foot line and will also need to have water pumped uphill to provide service. Would there be additional cost to pump this water uphill? Probably, but these are costs that are minimal since pumping stations will be required anyway, no matter where the water campus is located. Lastly, if the campus was located to the east and required water mains to service the Televeria Estates project would already be in the ground and would not require additional construction to tap into the existing line. There is also a city ordinance which will offer the recovery of pre-built infrastructure. There is no free lunch for any development, nor should there be, just because of timing of the projects. If the ideal location is at the proposed site, there is no technological impediment to burying the tanks so that they only have an elevation of five feet and they are below the screen wall. Again, the impediment is that this will cost more money, about $1 million per tank. However, in the revised plan for the campus, the applicant has reduced the number of tanks from three to two, thus saving approximately $1.25 to $1.5 million, since each surface tank costs that much. The cost to bury the two tanks would be about $4.5 to $5 million, which is a little more than the cost of the three surface tanks. While I am not sure why the applicant has revised the future water needs of the service area down by $1.5 million gallons, they would only incur a minimal additional cost to bury the tanks. If the applicant will not invest the time and the money to find a better location for the project, then the alternative would be to bury the two proposed tanks. The incremental cost to the applicant is not that great. Remember that the original campus had three tanks for a total cost of $3.75 to $4.5 million, while the revised campus would have two buried tanks for a cost of $4.5 to $5 million. A difference of less than a million dollars on the project, a small price to pay for keeping the view shed and the landscaping of the Camelback Corridor in line with the proposed development. Again, my first choice would be to move the water campus to a better location. My second choice would be to bury the tanks. There is still a third choice, since that would be another continuance or denial of the special use permit. I urge my fellow commissioners to not allow poor planning to bring this proposed industrial blight to the corner of the Camelback and Citrus in the upscale Sadea Development. Gary Gelsner, Vice Chair, Goodyear Planning Commission. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Coons. Would anyone like to speak to this or Mr. Coons? Okay. Mr. Kugler.
Kevin Kugler with RBF Consulting. It's my pleasure to be back in front of you again this evening to talk about kind of where we've been on this particular case. We didn't recognize early on, as we worked through staff, through the process, and as it's bubbled out to Planning Commission, just exactly what kind of court we were going to strike with the commission. We had some healthy dialogue on some issues last time. I think a lot of valid issues and points were brought up, and I think we're here to tell you this evening that we're pleased to present a, as Steve did a nice job of pointing out in the applet and the staff review of his reports, these changes that have been made to help better the condition that we think will appease the commission. Let me just, again, in an effort to not to be redundant with Steve's staff report, which he did a good job of going over, this was kind of the then, who will kind of give you a now and then. The early initial submitted that we all discussed collectively last time included three 1.5 million gallon tanks, 16 feet high. And as Steve pointed out, we had a landscape regime that was situated within the rear yards of the adjacent residential lots to the south and to the west of the proposed tank facilities. The, and we have a landscape berm as we do now. We have treatment facilities on site. Nothing there has changed, but the thing that substantial change, as Steve did point out, is going back and really trying to fine tune the regional needs of Arizona American Water Company, looking at and being responsive to commission's concerns. It has been decided amongst Meritage, my clients, and Arizona American Water to look at a two-tank facility at this time. And I think it's one thing, it's important to point out, that perhaps didn't really come through, wasn't conveyed too clearly in the discussion last time, is that Meritage Homes with the construction and development of the Sadea Master Plan Community is going to be looking at the construction of one tank to, of course, serve their needs. In fact, to cover the Meritage needs, they don't even need all the supply that's in the initial tank. And the reason I'm pointing that out is, we don't know if it's going to be your 1, 2, 5, or 10 when the second tank is going to come online. It's, kudos to Arizona American Water for trying to plan out ahead of what their water needs are going to be, but I can't tell you, as we sit here today, when that second tank is going to come on, so, online. I just, it's something that didn't immediately come through the discussion last time, and I felt compelled to point that out. Couple of other issues I wanted to point out, just with respect to the change in the proposal, are a couple things. We now have, as Steve pointed out, a landscape buffer that is going to be maintained by the homeowners' association. So what staff is recommending and Meritage is more than pleased to cooperate with is a view fence behind these rear lots, like so. We have a landscape tract that varies anywhere from 30 to 67 feet in width, and then the tank is set back, then another 20 feet. So when you have the combined rear yard, or the distance from where the actual house will sit, compiled with the landscape tract and the setback on the tank site, we have anywhere from, say, 60 to 100 feet setback from residential dwelling units to the proposed tank. What's also important to, I think, demonstrate is, and I'll go to the Elmo at least, is one thing we've heard from the commission last time was, it seemed to kind of gravitate towards two points, was, is this the right site for the, is this the right location for this type of facility? And the number two was more of an aesthetics issue, treatment, how do we, how do we dress the site up, if you will, to make it acceptable to Planning Commission? Relative to the notion of is it the right site, one thing that I don't think we did an adequate job of conveying to commission last time was, not only the aspect of the evolution of the development process and the whole idea of a new development coming to town and the need to be self-sufficient to serve their needs, and you can't always rely on your neighbor three miles away to serve your demand that you need today. That being aside, I'm here to submit to the commission that I don't think you're going to find this to be a very objectionable or unsightly use from the arterial roads. I know that's something that's a concern. There's been discussions amongst ourselves as a team, with you all, should we look at internalizing the site somewhere under the property? I don't think that makes a lot of sense either, simply because, I'll direct your attention to the fact that we have a relatively significant drainage channel that runs to the north, turns the corner at Camelback and Citrus, and then starts going south on Citrus. This area that we're talking about, commissioners, is anywhere from, from the right-of-way edge, we have from, right-of-way edge on Camelback to this edge of the tank is over 100 feet. In fact, it's 108, 109 feet. From the corner out here, in terms of the visibility, from the tank to the road, we have 206 feet, and from this side of the tank out to Citrus, it's 153 feet, of which an area that is going to be dressed up above and beyond the already generous Goodyear zoning ordinance and landscape standards that are normally required. We were going to significantly dress that up, and this was our attempt to provide an elevation, or a cross-section, I should say, of what that wash and interface is going to look like between the tanks and what the road's going to be. So I think in fairness to ourselves and to you, I wanted to really highlight that point, that I don't think we touched on that adequately enough. It's not going to be a 16-foot steel tank sitting 10 feet off the right-of-way edge that someone fall off a bike and knock their head onto. This is something that's going to be, it's going to be professionally landscaped above and beyond Goodyear's somewhat rigid landscape standards, and it's going to be tastefully done. So, outside of that, Madam Chairman, I'm willing to, I'm here with RBF, Matt Kleisakko, Mr. John Keenum, and Brad Terry from Meritage are here as well, if you should have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. I just have a quick question for you. Why did you choose to put, first of all, I do want to tell you, I do like how you did the landscaping, because that was my concern, was having the trees in the yard, so I like your buffer zone.
Thank you.
But why, when you chose the tanks, why is the one closer to the house the one that's going to be open in 2007, and the one kind of further away from the residential is the one opening later?
Unfortunately, this evening, we don't have Mr. Brad Finke, who was here last time with Arizona American, so I can give you my best estimate, and others can fill in where I may go astray, but to my best information, Commissioner Lortano, is that with respect to its proximity to the, just the functionality of the site, I guess, just simply put, accessibility, maintenance purposes, and relative to the, where the booster and treatment facilities are going to be, it makes the most engineering sense. Beyond that, I can't tell you specifically.
Yes, sir.
Kevin, I have a question, and it relates to that, same thing, kind of, but in the, on page one of the document that you submitted, is pyrobound?
Yes.
Okay. Down at the, very near the bottom of the paragraph says something to the effect that for Water Zone 1, the master plan has projected 4.5 million gallon of water storage to be required at build-out, which is estimated at the year 2020. Now, is that being discarded, or, let me ask you what that says? Is this on this?
No, I am. Madam Chairman, Commissioner De broken, excellent point, and your point is well taken, that Meritage Homes and Arizona American, I think, heated your call from the last commission meeting, quite frankly. I think everyone collectively recognized that it might have been 10 pounds of tank on a five-pound lot, as I like to say. It's not to say that their long-term regional needs are going to change, it's just that they're going to have to find another location for that extra tank site, quite frankly. And this is offered as extending the proverbial olive branch in an effort to compromise and provide something that we think is going to be acceptable to you all.
It's going to be in Zone 1?
They're still going to have to find a, yes.
That's, that's at all I was usually asking. It'll be in Zone 1, but it doesn't necessarily mean it'll be at this campus.
That's correct, and, well, I don't want to mislead you either. I don't know if I want to submit to you that it's going to necessarily be in Zone 1. If there's a different need or change down the road for a different geographic portion and their development comes online, they might find a way to do it there, too. But conceivably, Zone 1 would be ideal, yes, but I don't want to tell you with absolute certainty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
When, when it became apparent that the site was an issue with the Planning Commission, since that point, has there, has there been an honest effort to even look at another site, an alternative site? Or did we just go back to the drawing board and try to come back with another argument for this site?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Williams, good question. The short answer is that there's been a lot of work, engineering expense, time and money that have gone into this site. The Meritage Homes and Sadea are the entities who need the water in the short term. So I come back to this idea of self-sufficiency, like, and I don't mean to be philosophical here, but the HoHoCams, when they came in a long time ago, they built canals for themselves. When, when, in 1849, when the homesteaders came in, they had to be self-sufficient. It's, this is just modern-day terms of that same notion of self-sufficiency. It's difficult for any development interest to knock on the door of someone's property three miles away to provide a need that they need in the short term. And I guess, secondarily, from the technical sense, it really precludes the ability to do that, from the pressure zone analysis that we touched, touched on a little bit, Commissioner Williams, with respect to, and in supplemental information, Matt did an excellent job of laying out the discussion with respect to centrally located, combined with highest location within that water pressure zone, the combination. There may or may not be higher spots, but you want to try to have it centrally located for the most functional, just as, as the city does. If this was the city's water system, they would not locate a tank or a well that's 30 foot lower than where it should be and have booster stations that operate unnecessarily. So this, for that technical standpoint, and the self-sufficiency argument that I make are the two, I think, more than justifiable reasons why this site makes perfect sense.
You know, I understand all that, and I understand some of the issues and the difficulty with finding an alternative site. However, in this case, the site that Commissioner Gelsner proposed is commercial land that perhaps is for sale. You know, I've driven by the area a couple of times, and, you know, I know there's a sign up there on one or two parcels of land, that the land is available, and a number to call. And I guess you're telling me that, that nobody even made a telephone call to see if somebody would entertain providing land at, at the site a little bit east for this purpose.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Williams, I think the relative is in all evolution of time. The advent of this site just didn't happen in the last, in a vacuum in the past eight weeks. There's been considerable time and effort. In fact, over 14 or 15 months have gone into the facilities planning and negotiations between Meritage and Arizona American Water to find a site. And at that time, certainly those, I would submit to you, that that probably sign that you're referring to was not up or in or available. And even if the sign is up today, it's still not a function of the timeliness to have the need to water now. There's no, no compelling reason for property owner X, two miles away, to sell property to someone to do that. And if that were the case, getting back to the whole notion of the free market discussion that Gary has brought forward, well, the free market is indeed operating the way it should. It's, that would be counterintuitive to the free market, to knock on someone's door three miles away. They know that you need a water site, well, the value of that individual's property probably just, you know, escalated fivefold, that type of thing. So it's that notion of self-sufficiency, just like when a Suncor develops in Goodyear and a Stray Mountain Ranch, whomever, they are providing their own facilities to serve their needs as to our Meritage Homes in this. The issue here is, this section of dirt is a little bit disconnected from the rest of the world relative to its utilities, and therefore places that much more emphasis on the need to be self-sufficient. Did that answer your question? I mean, it is, it's a, evolution is a...
Ten minutes to say no, I think.
I got paid for at least eight of them, hopefully, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? You know, I truly appreciate the fact that you somewhat went back to the drawing board and, as you spoke of the olive branch. Two things that I feel that need to be stipulated in here. One, we've discussed previously, is that those homes that are adjacent to this will be single-story homes, but I also feel they need to have rearview fencing, and I would like that to be stipulated. We're leaving a little corridor there that could be, you know, need to have somebody's eyes at some point seeing back there. And, you know, I know you guys are in a position that's a difficult situation, and I know that Gary's point of view was move it, and we've discussed over the fact that you feel this is the proper place. So I'll give you all that, however you're not opposed, the fact that I think you need to sink them. And that's how I will accept this spot, is that they're lowered. I think you've done an excellent job at trying to alleviate it, but our city is a city of quality, and I don't, I don't want it to be any less in this situation. And so if you want it here to get my vote, it has to be sunk, at least eight feet. And that's where I stand, so. Anyone else from the public like to speak to this, or any other thoughts? Commission?
I just, I just have one comment, you know. I hope we can all learn something from this. It would seem that at some time in the future, you all will be back again with another development, another site, another location. And I hope you will take back from this experience that we've had in the last few days, what the City of Goodyear and the Planning Commission would like to see when we do install a utility facility someplace. And instead of taking just one corner that the developer offers, you know, look around for the proper site and see if that can be acquired, and explain to us, if it can't be acquired, explain to us why it can't.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Williams, yes, duly noted, and I would concur. Yes, I think every party here has learned from this exercise. Yes, I think every party here has learned from this exercise. I would absolutely agree.
Okay. Madam Chairman, oh, I'm sorry for a question. Yes, Madam Chair, the chairman was saying sinking them. How tall, and I'm sure it's in here, I just don't have it right in front of me right now, how tall are these tanks? What is the height on these now?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lortano, they are 16 feet high.
16, and you have an eight-foot fence surrounding them?
We have, yes, yes, ma'am, we do.
So if they were sunk eight feet, they would be really not visible. I mean, the highest point, I think they kind of go up a little bit on the top there, so the highest point might peek over a little and be covered by the trees if they were sunk the eight feet.
I think that's a fair assessment, yes. If we do start entertaining the, why I'm not conceding at this point to talking about sinking the tanks, but if we kind of elevate to that level of discussion, we'd like to talk to you about a couple provisions along the way, maybe varying heights or something like that, but.
I thought it was 16 at the beginning, up to 20 in the center.
It's, it's 16 at the edge, yes.
So if it goes.
With a 112 or a 212 pitch that gets you to 21 and 1/2, 22 feet at the peak, that's correct.
And then what's the pitch of the road here where you're going to see these? Is it, is it lower or, it's hard to tell from your cross-section.
The grade of the road as relative to the pad elevation of the site, I believe, is roughly, yeah, six inches off or something like that. It's, it's really, really close, six inches.
Also, it's pretty much the same thing, not like it's going to, this is going to be lower to start with or something.
Correct, correct.
Can you sink them?
It's, it's doable. I mean, anything is doable relative, it's all the value of money and design of the site and functionality. I mean, yeah, I can't sit here and tell you that, we talked about before that putting the steel itself into the dirt is not a good idea for corrosive purposes. The city has done on other sites that they own, they've put them in concrete vaults, and it's a very substantial capital investment to do so, but I cannot tell you that it cannot be done, that wouldn't be fair to say.
So it's kind of like sticking them in a pool down in the ground?
Pool's no water, I suppose, but yes. It's a concrete vault, basically.
Got a little buffer. Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Okay, I shall close the public hearing and ask for commission action. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'd like to just make one other comment. I would like to commend Meritage, you know, for their efforts. I mean, to propose this buffer like this, I'm sure it's not an insignificant cost for them to do that. And, you know, I at least think that they should get at least a pat on the back for working hard and making an effort to do that for us.
I need a motion.
Well, I'll move, can I move with an amendment?
What you thinking? Go ahead.
Can I move that we do, well, you had three things that I kind of agree with. The view fencing, which I think they already stipulated too, they said that was going to be view fencing.
I didn't see that on there, so I was just.
Okay, but they kept saying it, I didn't see.
I know we discussed it.
The view fencing, what was the other thing? The, what was, I wrote that, I just wrote that down somewhere. The single story, and I think we discussed that last time too, I don't think that's a problem. And approve it with the, if they're willing to sink at the eight feet. Can I add that as an amendment to that?
Yeah, well.
Can we even stipulate to those things since it's, so it's, I mean, because it's, I know it's kind of related, but.
Stipulating what?
Stipulating the rearview fencing. Fencing for, for the Meritage Homes and then that may be.
Oh, because this is.
Right, because this is for the use permit for the, for the water campus as opposed to, to, you know, messing with.
Madam Chair, commission members, I'll do the easy one first. The single story, we stipulated that with the final class, so that's taken care of.
That's taken care of, okay.
Yes. Regarding the view fencing, we specifically have it called out on the site plan here, so even though it's going to be a residential fence, we're viewing this as part of the site plan for this site, and it's specifically called out on this site plan, so we would be requiring that with the formal site plan.
So it's okay, okay, so we don't need to stipulate that, okay.
Staff did not think so because it was specifically called out here.
I applaud it, okay, great. I don't think we can stipulate the sinking until discussed. Am I, huh? Then you don't.
I withdraw my motion.
Yeah, okay.
Kevin, one more.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, commissioners, is that your option? If the commission desires and finds that the way that is, you know, the required findings for use permit, that in your opinion, that in order to make that finding that it is compatible and not materially detrimental to the public as required?
Okay.
That it takes a stipulation that the tanks be sunk six, eight feet, then that is entirely appropriate within, and it was within your purview to do so?
Okay, thank you. All right.
Then I'll renew my motion.
Wouldn't agree with.
Hi. Yes, sir.
Wouldn't agree with. Madam Chair and Commissioner Lortano, we fully appreciate and recognize where this discussion seems to be going, and we appreciate that. As we've gone back and looked at things as well in anticipation that this might come up, we would respectfully request that the, the motion read for a tank height not to exceed 12 point, 12 feet in height at the tallest point of the tank.
Okay.
Which still provides for a fairly substantial submersion, if you will, of the, of the tank itself. So the lowest point of the tank is going to be below the wall, and as it goes up, we'd like to, the highest point of the tank not to exceed 12 feet in height would, would be our desire.
That sounds good to me. Anyone? How would you feel?
Yeah.
Well, yes, sir.
Well, I like it.
You like it? Okay.
His last comments, same it took so long to get there.
Yes, sir.
With that in mind, I'll second this, what Lortano's motion.
I have a question first.
Wait a minute. Sean.
Do you can still ask the question?
Okay.
It's still, okay, thank you.
Although if you say not to exceed, though, but that does not then require, I don't think that that then requires them to do any sinking. That will still allow them to not sink.
But it still won't be higher than.
They'd just be short.
Does it? No, above, I think above the, the view fence, right? That was what, not above the ground?
No.
You meant above the ground? Okay.
Finished floor of the ground, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's.
All right, I want to make sure that it was, you know, we're talking about the ground versus fence.
Talking about the fence, yes.
I'll take it. Rule of the offer, I'm here to take it.
Oh, no, 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 we're not offering you that one, sorry. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second with the added.
Height stipulation.
Height stipulation in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
We want to thank the commission and Mr. Williams' comments. We appreciate that. Meritage has really been proactive and responsible, I think, and both myself, as my company, and Meritage Homes, we are here to be collaborative with Goodyear for the long haul, so we appreciate your comments.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, 7/38. This is it, staff.
We're just trying to figure out what, because the options are there. We have a meeting on the 21st, so we have the, have scheduled the Amherst rezoning, I believe, rescheduled that, and also we have the state land rezoning. So we have a very busy 21st meeting, those are, I think those are just two, I actually have several others, don't we? And a couple others.
We have corporate campus for the baseball and a couple others, so it'll be a busy evening.
So it appears we may not need one for the first meeting in April, so.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, great.
Anything else?
We don't have anything else.
That's it, isn't it? Okay.
Thank you for coming.
I move adjourned.
Okay, second adjourned, thank you.